Service Committee, November 30th, 2023.
I'd like to call the Service Committee meeting together to order at 6:00 PM. Members present Steve Young, C. Aaron Scherick, Brenton Potter, and myself as chairman. At this time, we'll open up to the public for any public participation. Seeing none, you got the minutes in front of you from November 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 9th, 2023's regular Service Committee meeting.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Scherick. I got a second from Mr. Young. Any more discussion on them? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have with us tonight Dylan from McKeever and Associates. He would like to explain some of the things that like the next three or four items that we're going to do, so you're on.
All right, Dylan Lyon from McKeever and Associates. If you ever know anything in particular when we all start.
Just first on our list is the East Waterline Project.
Okay, so first one, Lincoln Highway Waterline Extension. This is going from 602 to the east about 3,000 feet. We will pick up eight customers with this line is the intention. And several of these customers have called into the city expressing interest in water and showed up at our office expressing interest in water, asking when it was going to be done. We'd like to get authorization to be able to go out to bid. The plans are prepared, ready for bid. The total not to exceed cost would be $154,600.
Okay. One?
Tap grants.
What?
Tap grants.
Yeah, tap grants.
All our tap grants, right. Okay, so the next one, as you guys probably heard, the city received a grant for around $1.23 million to put in water services, water taps to all of the potential customers along the county projects, along all these water lines extensions that we've been putting in. So we have the first set of those taps ready to go. This will cover the Stetser Road Phase 1 project that was installed in early 2021, Partridge Road project that was installed last summer, and the Nevada Winford Road project that is just coming to a close here within the last few months. There's a total of 122 taps as a part of this project. Total not to exceed price on this would be $292,600. And since this is part of the grant, how this grant works is the city will make payment to the contractor and then they get reimbursed for all expenses as part of this project.
Good. That's awesome. Okay. Next one is a Sulphur Springs Locust Grove Water Project.
Yep, so this one is water line running up Locust Grove Road and then into and including all of Sulphur Springs. Roughly 27,000 feet of water line will be installed as part of this project. And this is the joint project that the Crawford County Commissioners have partially funded. Total price of this project is $1,503,000. Of that, $818,000 roughly will come from the Commissioners and $164,000 will be a part of the Water Services Grant that you'll, that the city will get reimbursed for. So this one, we just, last week, received the final EPA and ODOT approvals, so we're ready to go out to bid on that one as well.
And the last one is the design loan for Morton Lindor Package Plants.
All right, so this is just for allowing the Service Director apply for WPCLF funds, Water Pollution Loan Control Fund. Funds for the project, only for design of the project, and this project would include regionalizing the Lynn Lair and Morton wastewater plants. These are two of the three small wastewater plants that were taken over from the county Commissioners about three and a half years ago, three years ago. This, one of them, Lynn Lair, is on, out on Partridge Road and it services Oak Drive that comes off of the Lincoln Highway, and then the Morton subdivision services, Morton wastewater plant services the small subdivision there near the bypass Lincoln Highway. The intention of this project is to be able to do away with both of these plants and pump the sewage to the City of Bucyrus system, which then does away with the future maintenance of the plants and also does away with Tim Wood, the Class 3 operator for Bucyrus having to go out and spend time out there every day as the certified operator for the plants.
You're going to put a lift station in where, on 30?
Yeah, so we would have a large lift station near Oak Drive at Lincoln Highway. It would pump all the way back into, near the Timken entrance is the end of the gravity sewer for Bucyrus, and then the Morton lift station would tie into that force main and then pump back to town.
What is, do you know what the loan's for, how much it's going to be for it on that project?
So it is, I will give you rough numbers. So our design costs for the project, so the total project is just over $1.75 million, and the design cost for that is $114,000. I will say, so we are applying for this design loan, but yesterday we also applied for Ohio Department of Development Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Grant for the construction cost of the project. But that grant funding doesn't allow for design to be included, so that has to be funded separately. So we should know in the next month and a half to two months on Ohio Department of Development Grant. A lot of it is pending on having shovel-ready projects because it's a very time-restrictive grant. But the intention would be to get this, if we find out that we get this grant, would be to get it ready as quickly as possible, get it out to bid, get it in construction to meet all the deadlines of the Department of Development Grant.
People that live on 330, could they tap into that line, that sewer line?
Yes, they could tap into it. They would end up having to have a pump at their property, but they would be able to tie directly into the force main, yes.
If they had to.
Yep.
So do we have any questions?
I will say that there's, there's not, being that that's a force main, there's not a requirement for them to tie in, but they can if they need to or want to.
Okay. No EPA rule says if it's available, they have to, if it's not a force main.
If it's a gravity sewer, yep.
Okay, does anybody got any questions for Dylan? Steve? Okay. Thank you. All we do is approve of them, and then Finance Committee would have to approve of the, of the money. So we can make a motion to do all of them, to say we've passed on the finance, or you want to do them separately? Which way?
Collectively.
Collectively. You want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to send the tap grant project, Sulphur Springs/Locus Grove Waterline Project, the design loan for Morton and Lynn Lair Package Plants.
330 East?
330 East Waterline Project.
To Finance?
To Finance.
Okay. You got a motion to move these projects to the Finance Committee?
Take it.
Mr. Young, seconds. Any more discussion among us? Seeing none, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we got a list of our open projects that Miranda was nice to give to us, thank you. Let's look those over for the next meeting. Our next meeting we have is next week, next Tuesday. If there's anything in there you need, you think needs to be taken off this, we will address that then, so. Okay. Any more, anybody from the public have any participation? Seeing none, we'll be adjourned at 6:09.
Health and Safety Committee, November 30th, 2023.
We'll call the Health and Safety Committee to order at 6:10 PM. Members present are Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself Chair. Is there any public participation for the Health and Safety Committee? Seeing none, you have in front of you the minutes for the November 9th, 2023 regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. McKeever. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Changes to the property maintenance code, Mr. Gernert.
Mr. Grove tonight was at a Colonel Crawford Junior High Basketball Game watching his grandchildren, so he was unable to be here tonight. I'll try to get him here next Tuesday, or if not, bring a report pertaining to exactly what he's looking at.
Can you kick that to our next meeting? All right, sounds good. Did any of you have anything on the open projects list you want us to discuss, Mr. Young?
I have a bunch.
Mr. McKeever?
Mr. Wireball?
No, not this time.
Okay, is there any further public participation? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 6:11 PM.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, November 30th, 2023.
I'm calling Public Lands and Buildings Committee to order at 6:12 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Brenton Potter, and myself, C. Aaron Scherick, Chair. Do we have any public participation?
Yeah, write that off. Bucyrus, address and phone numbers on the sign-in sheet. I was wondering where we are at on the Pines Reservoir. As far as getting that around and available so some people in Bucyrus can go out there and enjoy a hike or a walk or some trails or anything.
Yeah, I was at the last, well, not the last one, the one before, Parks Meeting. Probably the day or so before that, I talked to the, I'm trying to think of his name. What's the guy from?
Josh.
Well, that's Josh. I talked to Josh on that day, but the guy from the Conservancy.
Joe Leslie.
Joe, yeah, I talked to Joe, and he says, "Oh, I'm glad you called. You were, you were on my list," and all this stuff. So that was in October. October, he said, well, it was before October. Anyway, he's, he said, "We need, need to get this grant." And so it was like the very next day, I talked to Josh, and, and same, Josh says the same thing, "Yeah, I got, he's on my list to call." So where it went from there, I don't know, but they had to connect and they both wanted to get it done, and Joe assured me that it could be done by the end of the year. So I haven't talked to him since, but like I say, that was probably around October.
So is this on your, your list of open projects?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what, what they needed was to get this grant going. They needed to apply for this grant in October, which I think they've done, so, but I, I can't tell you for sure. No one's told me. Have you heard anything? Has anyone?
Wasn't there a time where Joe Leslie was going to come in and with a presentation?
He was.
He said he was going to, yeah.
He said he was going to.
Is that still a thing, do you know?
I haven't seen, I talked to him.
And they're applying for grants, and they haven't even come in and give the guys a presentation yet, so.
Yeah, I don't know, but.
Right, a couple, well, several meetings ago now, one of the last things I remember taking place was we had a conversation that, and I don't know whether either one of you can answer, has anything happened between, have you guys talked as far as your office and you, that you were going to get some access to get in there? Okay, is that still something that we can do, or are you looking into next year now, or?
That's going to be a thing, if Joe Leslie's coming in with a presentation and Josh is getting involved and.
I don't know.
I mean, I'm waiting for somebody to say, "Yeah, go ahead, Ray, do something."
Like, like I said, the last, I, they sound like they were moving ahead with it, so the, the holdup before was the one hand didn't know what the other hand was doing, apparently had to go to County Commissioners, and I, and they didn't know what was going on, so kind of.
I don't want that to happen again.
Yeah.
We got the, we got the ball rolling again the second time. I don't want this to happen again.
I understand, and that's what I was expressing to Joe, that, hey, I think we've, you know, the people I've talked to on, on council, I said, "I think we've got this ready to roll, but I don't want to lose it."
They kind of stalled it.
I don't know how much I can, other than calling him and asking him, but.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, I don't have more for you, but.
Okay, anybody else to call the participation? All right, so next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from October 19th, 2023. I would.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a first by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the approval of minutes from November 9th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Oh, first by Mr. Virus, second by Mr. Wireball, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so both of those have been approved. Then it's got the rules and guidelines for establishing the Park Legacy Fund.
Well, I have a letter included.
Oh, yes, you had a, you had it posted on there. Sorry, thanks.
I don't know if that's the, the right one.
Oh, no, that's Columbia Gas.
No, that was.
Is that it?
No, that wasn't.
I didn't see it.
I don't have the letter.
Maybe it's just Mary, do you have something?
Oh, Brian has it. And I'm not sure we're quite ready for that, we're still trying to see what the general rules are, and modeling after that. And we got a whole bunch today, we're not quite ready to present it yet.
I'll suggest we kick this to the next meeting.
Yep. All right, so kicking that to the next meeting, then I have a letter here from Columbia Gas that I was given as correspondence, hopefully for Public Lands. November 21st, 2023. As it has for several years, Columbia Gas of Ohio in 2023 is investing in infrastructure replacement programs that benefit both our customers and your community. As authorized by the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, it is in its opinion and order in case numbers 210637-GA-AIR at all, Columbia may recover certain infrastructure investments made in the previous calendar year. Columbia will soon make its annual filing with the PUCO to set rates for the Infrastructure Replacement Program Rider, Rider IRP. In February, our application will request an increase of an estimated $28.7 million to be collected through the Rider IRP beginning May of 2024. Columbia's noticed Rider IRP rate will raise bills by approximately $1.38 per month for the SGS rate class. Columbia has also noticed a 6.23 surcharge for the GS rate class and a 12.38 surcharge for the LGS rate class. Under its infrastructure replacement program, Columbia is replacing aged cast iron, wrought iron, unprotected coated steel, and bare steel distribution pipe, as well as hazardous customer service lines. Replacing our aged distribution main with modern pipe produces several benefits for our customers and our communities. It reduces leaks, which enhances the safety of our system and means we have to dig up streets, sidewalks, and lawns less often. It allows us to operate distribution systems at higher pressures, which keeps water from infiltrating lines and disrupting service, and better supports economic development in older neighborhoods. It lowers our operating and maintenance costs, and these savings get passed on to our customers. It relieves customers of repair bills in hundreds or thousands of dollars if their customer service lines develop a hazardous leak. Prior to 2008, these service lines were customer-owned and equipment. The actual Rider IRP is subject to PUCO approval. You are not required to take any action, but should you wish to view our pre-filing notice or any other public documents in this case, you may visit the PUCO's online docketing information system at www.pucohio.gov and review the filings made for case number 23-1036-GA-RDR. We are committed to providing outstanding customer service and to maintaining strong relationships with the communities we serve. If you have any questions about our rate adjustment, please contact Melissa Thompson, Director of Regulatory Policy at 614-315-3391. So please, if you have questions, please reach out to this person, and this is in our stuff online, correct? Awesome. All right, so we just got the.
That doesn't have anything, any action that we would need to take?
No, no, but it's, it's something that our people in the city do need to hear.
Absolutely, I was questioning the relevancy to Public Lands and Buildings, and I thought if it needed something, we might want to read it Tuesday as a communication and refer it to the appropriate committee if they need to do anything with it. But if it doesn't require anything, then that's.
It doesn't require anything. So the most it would be, yeah, is either Public Lands or Service at that point, so we ready, we got it. The open projects list, we just got a new copy of. I figure you guys could all go over that, and we can see if there's anything we need to touch based on, on the next meeting? Unless somebody saw something tonight?
No.
Okay. All right, and do we have any public participation? All right, seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:22 PM.
Planning Committee, November 30th, 2023.
I'll call Planning to order at 6:23 PM. Members present Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair. Is there any public participation for Plating?
Carolyn Shireman at 65 East Bill Avenue. I'm going to talk about renaming the city's streets. First off, I heard this last night watching council. It's appalling that you would want to change the street name. First off, Roger Moore was only the mayor for two years, and he died, and that is why you are the mayor. And in his two years, I cannot, unless any of you guys can tell me, what did he accomplish in those two years? I'm not done yet, please. Tell me what he accomplished in two years that warrants a street to be named after him. Second, Dan Ross was a mayor for a lot longer than Roger Moore, and Dan Ross accomplished a lot more than Roger Moore. So I think that if you want to name Plum Street after Roger Moore, the other street you want to rename should be renamed after Dan Ross. Thank you.
Jenny Vermillion, 515 Hill Street. Just a question on an update on the sidewalks out to Walmart that had been, that aren't actually sidewalks, they're berm. And at one point, it was tossed around that they would do some sort of study to narrow the roadway where the cars drive to be able to widen where people walk. So I just wondered if there's any update. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think since Dylan's here tonight, we're going to make a rough idea of what we, I think we're in like the $750,000 range. Could you speak to that?
All right, so just a little history on that. So we, we have looked at that multiple times. That project is a little more significant than just installing sidewalks. In order to truly make them safe, compliant sidewalks, we would be looking at doing a curved raised sidewalk and with the narrow right-of-way and power lines there. It is a, it's a difficult and expensive project. Last I had looked at it, and it's been a while ago, it was somewhere in the $650,000 to $750,000 project. And what ends up happening is that currently that is mostly an uncurbed street, and when you change it to a curbed street, you also have to change a lot of the storm infrastructure that's there. And so, so you end up with a storm project that the sidewalks end up being incidental to. And it's just, it's a very costly project, and that's kind of where it's been left at right now.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It was presented for one of the proposals for the capital budget this time, but it, it was, it didn't make the list. It was Lynn Lair and some of the other ones that had it, so it's, it would be nice to do that, but it's, we're just going to have to apply the grants for it, so.
Is there anybody else? Okay, with that, I do have for you the minute from November 9th. Can I have someone entertain a motion?
I'll approve to, or vote to approve these. Motion to approve, that's what I'm saying.
I'll second.
Okay, I have it, Kirk from Kevin, Terry. There's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, renaming the streets.
I have a couple of questions and comments, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
But Mr. Gernert, looks like he does first.
Well, procedurally, if you guys are going to move forward with this, there would have to be a public hearing pursuant to the statute.
Correct.
So that would be.
Anything with plating, we're changing, you have to have a public hearing.
So we would have to have a public hearing. That's all I got.
Okay, if I may, a couple of questions. Have you guys discussed with the EMA and the GIS people, any of the, the things that go along with that? I know there's no address points as far as house addresses, but has that been discussed with them to look at the complexity of those changes?
No, we haven't discussed.
Okay, I'm just curious what we're getting into. I think that would be a smart move to talk to them before we, we even go to having a public hearing, just to check, so I'd maybe ask that you look into that with them.
I can do that.
Okay, and then actually, a couple of opinions that I have and some people that have contacted me about these. I agree with Mrs. Shireman in the fact that if we're going to honor, you know, Mr. Moore, I think, you know, we, we have other recent mayors like Mr. Ross that, that do also need that. And I think if we're going to look at it, let's, let's not just jump to the gun and say, "We want to go out and recognize this one gentleman," and, and no disrespect to Mr. Moore and his family, but I think we need to say, if we want to honor, you know, somebody that held an office, we need to probably look a little broader in doing that. And then when you were talking about, and, excuse me, I didn't write down the name, what did you want to change inside the park to?
Medal of Honor.
Medal of Honor, which I think is interesting and it's nice, you know, and I don't know the history behind each of the streets that we currently have. I know we do have a Sears Street, we do have a Martin Avenue. Are either of those names after those individuals? I'd kind of like to look at the history and see.
They're, they're not.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with, with trying to honor the people. I think what you're doing is great, I just wonder, you know, it's kind, it reminded me of when, when we changed the area codes years ago, and everybody had to go get new letter heads and stuff, and I know, like we said, there's not a lot of addresses on those, but you know, there's a lot of things to consider and other costs involved, I want to make sure that we're looking at all those, and I think that'll come out when the public hearing, but I kind of wanted to share that opinion, so. That's all I had on that.
Terry, you have anything?
No. Wow, I, I don't have anything really relevant. My only, my only comment is, and no disrespect to anyone, is that if we're going to name streets, let's put some streets in here. Let's, we need housing. I would rather see the, the effort put towards putting new streets in, and we can name them whatever we want.
I was just going to say, I had that thought the other night, too, let's build a whole new subdivision and name it after every mayor we've had.
Yeah, so.
Oh, no. No.
So I just, which, I just noticed the, I just noticed, and this is kind of off the mark, but that Gawain is starting a new housing development, so next council, you need to kind of go over there and see what's going on, and, and the next administration, I don't see anybody here, but you're missing out.
We need some manufacturing jobs in Bucyrus. What do you think about housing?
I don't think.
Some good manufacturing job.
We did a 50, what, 50, what'd we, what'd we put to it, $40,000 housing study? Was 40,000 was our part?
No, no, no.
No. 10 was our part.
Yeah, the overall was like 55.
Overall was 55. So we did a housing.
Yeah, we're, we're short.
We're short on housing. We did the study, we did all the, we did everything we needed.
Short on everything.
Yeah, but we wanted to name three.
So.
Nothing to do with that.
Can I go to the voting table? Thank you. Shireman. Mr. Reeser, I would just love to ask you, what is your thought in wanting to change the streets?
I'm giving the impression you don't like them.
I don't, and you know that, as you don't like me, but that's beyond point. I don't, and you know that, as you don't like me, but that's beyond point. No, you don't. Yeah, remember how you do it all the way?
Okay.
So let's go back to my question. Well, I just want to know, what? Oh, you are?
Okay.
You know why he wants to name it Moore's? No, I have a right to talk. I have three minutes to talk, and I will answer-
That's at a council meeting, Carolyn, not at a committee meeting.
Okay, well, I'm gonna say it anyway, you can ask me to leave, whatever, it doesn't matter. The only reason he wants to name it Moore Street, because it's by his house, and he's the legacy. He's the legacy of Roger Moore.
It's, it's not Reeser Street, it's Moore Street.
But you want to put it there because you stated it at the council meeting to state night.
Okay, I call it enough.
Yes, Mr. Keever.
Please have a seat.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm glad you asked me to say that. Your manners are nuts to the people that come, who wonder nobody comes here. You got a lying mayor.
No, he's calling names.
Don't, you don't know me.
Don't call names on the floor.
I did, I said you got a lying mayor.
Care on me.
I didn't call a thing. But it's Reeser now that I've said that. Go ahead.
Enough.
Don't talk to me like a child. I've had enough of all of you guys. And I could call every one of you.
We will table the renaming of the streets to the next meeting. Is there any open projects that you would like to discuss on the open project list?
No, sir.
Not this time.
Nope.
Okay, is there any other public participation? No? I will adjourn at 6:34 PM.
Economic Development Committee, November 30th, 2023.
All right, I'd like to call Economic Development to order at 6:35 PM. Members present, C. Aaron Scherr, Steve Young, Mark Keever, and myself, Chair. First, we'll open it up for any public participation. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from-
I will, I will make a motion to approve the minutes for November 9th, 2023's regular Economic Development Committee meeting.
Second.
All right, I got a first from Ms. Scherr, a second from Mr. Young, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Next, our open project list is pretty small, but thank you for updating it. Is there anything anybody saw that they want to speak on? Mr. Keever?
No.
All right, so last would be any public participation. Seeing none, we will adjourn at 6:35 PM, or 6:36 PM.
Finance Committee, November 30th, 2023.
I'll call Finance to order at 6:37 PM. Members present, Mark Keever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair. Is there any public participation for Finance Committee?
Craig White, 725 Hill Crest Drive. I have a couple of questions for you, because it wasn't very, I don't think, very well explained during the Service Committee. So it's my understanding we're tapping a line east of 602 from-
Don't know more about it.
Okay, so you're saying it's gonna cost the city $154,600 for eight customers only?
Yeah, that's with contingency also.
What's the contingency? You didn't go over that.
So, $140,545 is actual anticipated construction cost, and then there's a 10% contingency.
So how much is that costing the city, the $154, or what is the total cost?
It would be estimated construction cost is the $140,545.
But is it all that grant funding? Isn't all funded?
That is not.
The majority of it?
No. Of that $14,100 is grant funding.
So basically, the project, what you're saying is about $200,000 for eight customers, with a hundred and some thousand?
One fifty.
One fifty. Okay, with only, how much grant money out of the total cost of the $140 and $154?
So, $14,000, so the actual city, Besire's cost is in the $126,000 range.
For eight customers?
Yeah.
Okay. I find that kind of ridiculous, to spend $126,000 for eight customers, and what is gonna be the rate charged to those people? For eight customers?
Same as ours.
Same as ours.
So, so basically, how long is it gonna take to recoup? Can I finish, please, sir?
I was just gonna ask you a question. Nobody knew, I figured out, about 10 to 12 years, we think.
On eight customers, and they're gonna be paying, what, probably $80 a month with our source? So basically, what you're saying is, you're thinking only 10 to 12 years? For only eight residents, for $126,000. My other question, too, is, I don't know, and I haven't seen the budget yet, but did the Finance Committee taken to effect the buyouts of the police and fire in the next budget, or not?
We have to cut it, sorry, we have to cut the budget, or we had to cut the police and fire buyouts in the general fund to make the budget balance.
So it's-
It's not in there.
So the over half million dollars is not in there? Of the current buyout, if people would leave, say, January next year?
No, that's not taken into account.
That is not taken into account, that we're gonna be over half million dollars plus, that if these guys decide, the seven or eight guys decide to leave, that's not in the budget?
No.
Wow, thank you.
Let me explain, Ms. White, on the 602, the, the plan is to loop that eventually, I believe, isn't it, Mayor? It's loop all that, make one loop instead of a dead end and down there, is to make-
That portion of the line is, is just a dead end.
Yeah, but eventually, they want to loop that around there, don't they?
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're currently doing right now with the Stetser line. I don't know that we're gonna ever loop further to the east, though. There's, it's, where you really get, it's a stretch before you get to any more customers.
Any other public participation? If not, we'll move to the approval of the minutes for November 9th, from November 9th, 2023. Regular Finance Committee motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Mark, second by Terry. All in favor? Aye. With the 330 East Waterline Project, I guess we just talked about that a little more. But any comments on that? And I think that, I think what, I know what Mr., or what, what you're talking about, but we've been, we wouldn't even be that far if we wouldn't have, we're just moving out. And I, and I had this, when we first built the plant, when Roger Moore first started, so I'll get on a soapbox here for a little bit, when Roger Moore first started here and decided, and we decided, we needed a new water plant, because the other one, during the one flood, we, it was about that far from just shutting us down. So, we, we decided to build a water plant, and, where I was going with that, but anyway, okay, when we did that, we started, then we started expanding water lines to other places. I think we first went down Crestline Road, some people out there needed some, and then Sulphur Springs. We were fortunate to go to Nevada, that should be, that should be a great thing. And, you know, personally, myself, I thought it was a bad idea, I'll be honest, I thought it was a bad idea. But I thought it was a bad idea lowering the water rates, I thought, they should pay more. But now, over time, I'll, I'll admit when I'm wrong, so I guess I was wrong. So, we're selling water, so we've got this multimillion-dollar plant out here we're trying to pay for, and one of the ways we can pay for it, by selling more water. So when we move down Stetser Road, down to Sulphur Springs, then that gives us the opportunity to move east of, east of 602, we went to, well, years ago, we went down 330 into, into North Robinson, this big water tower out there. So, we just keep doing that. So, so back then, when Roger was talking about building that, some of you may know, my, my, my family's from down south Gally County, and in Gally County, it's a, it's a county-wide water system, just like, just like Delco over here. And at some point, and nothing against farmers or anything, but they have to use these chemicals that gets into the water, at some point, the EPA's gonna come and shut down all these, all these people's wells. And if we're not ready to take water out to these people, then, you know, we're gonna miss out. And we about did with, well, we missed out on-
New Washington.
New Washington, because we really weren't acting fast enough, and that Northern Rule Water came in and took that, that could have been, could have been more money for us. So, I know, you say it's only eight customers, but we're building, we're trying to build, so, yeah, we might get eight customers there, and who knows, you know? Will we make it all the way to Crestline? I don't know. You know, can we work something out? I don't know. So, I guess that's, that's my take on the 330 East Waterline Project. So what do we need on that? We just need to put it out for bid, is that what it was, or?
Yeah.
And just to let you guys know that the projects that Dylan has brought up have been budgeted for in next year's budget in the paper in front of you, except for the, sorry, loan for the Morton-Linley package plants, but as he said, he's going out for grabs.
Oh, that's the one we have to go, yeah, that's the one we're going on. So, the 330 East Waterline Project, we need a motion to-
Mr. Chairman, I think, too, that's a different fund than the general fund, too.
Right.
Not that we realize that, those are enterprise funds which are led by user fees.
Right, that's the other thing, you-
It's not nothing to do with the retirements or anything.
Right, that won't, that won't affect the retirements on the, on the police department, won't, it's, we can't, we can't sell more water and use it to open a swimming pool. We can't even do that, we have to keep all these funds separate. So this, this fund comes from water-
Usage.
Water usage, money we get from water, we put back in so that we can keep doing that. So, just to clarify that a little bit, but anyway, we need a motion to put this out for bid, is that what we're after?
With a not-to-exceed number of- And that's as an emergency. I'll make a motion to go out for bid for the 330 East Waterline Project with a not-to-exceed number of $154,600.
I'll second that.
As an emergency.
All in favor? Aye. And then we're on to the TAP grant projects. Now that is grant money, that is, yeah, that was, that's all grant money. When I was, when I was serving on the Health Department, we were, they couldn't give, they couldn't sell enough of those taps out, they had a grant for out, out towards Oceola, and they couldn't get enough people to, to tie in, or it was sewer grants. But anyway, they couldn't find enough people to do it, there's the money, and people won't even do it. So, so we've got the money, and we got, we've got a lot of people that want it, and so, it's kind of just, it's just helping us sell more water, so. Where are we at on that? We have to put that out, is that out to bid, or? Put that out to bid?
$292,600.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to go out to bid for the TAP grant projects as an emergency, not to exceed $292,600.
I'll second it.
Terry, second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, now we, the same thing on the Sulphur Springs-Locus Grove Waterline Project. And how much was that? That was like-
That is $1,503,000. Our share of that is 521, 521,000, correct? Yeah. Eighteen is the commissioners' and- So there is- 164,000.
164,400 will come from the Water Services Grant, 818,220 is from the commissioners, and 520,380 is Besire's share.
He's like 812,000.
Yep.
I gotta put it in the legislation.
I know, I know.
You got the notes, go ahead.
All right, so, I will request emergency legislation for the Sulphur Springs-Locus Grove Waterline Project as an emergency. Total cost, 105, $1,503,000 with our city portion at $520,380, not to exceed that from the city.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Aye. And we're on to the design loan for Morton-Linley. Now this one is just, you're just going for the-
So this one is just for-
This one is just for the design of the project. Yesterday, we submitted for the total construction loan, or total grant for construction through Ohio Department of Development.
So what do you need from us on this one?
So this is just authorizing legislation to authorize the Service Director to apply for a design loan through WPCLF.
Oh, that's, I did see that one here.
I'll make a motion requesting emergency legislation authorizing the Service Director to apply for the grant for the design loan for the Morton-Linley Packaging Plans for the WPCLF.
I'll second that.
Mark, second, it's all in favor? Aye. Okay, so those are taken care of. Police Chief's salary.
So, the next, listen, another little bit. What are we discussing, the fire union's salary tonight as well?
Well, the police-
The police chief's salary was brought up as it's tied to the manpower.
So I was, if the, if the, if the committee asked for legislation to proceed with the union contract with the police department, then I would also ask for legislation to mimic the raise that the union's getting for the fire, or police chief, because historically, those two, and by the Manpower Act, those two have been tied together, so we would just need to update the Manpower Act and the billlet, but I didn't see on here where the police union contract is being discussed.
That's down here.
It is, it's on there.
I'll wait, almost at the end.
Three more budget, or three, three more lines now.
Appropriations to salary?
Police contract.
Right, before open projects.
I have revised it.
I have the old one.
You got the old one.
Welcome to the party, sir.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, we would just need legislation, if the council were so inclined to give him the same percent raise plus dollar raise that they were going to give the union.
Okay, and Kevin's got a question?
When we discussed the budget for the police contract, and everything was okay, was the police chief's salary being in line with this, brought into consideration, and that is also okay with the budget? Okay.
Okay, so, let's, since we've got that on, kind of out, talking about, let's, let's do that, let's do the police contract. So, my understanding is that the, we do have a contract with the police department.
They've accepted, y'all.
They've accepted the city's offer. They both were very agreeable to it, I guess, it wasn't, so, so, of course, we're okay with it, if they are, it's in the budget, so I guess all we need to do is-
I make a motion to accept the police contract as emergency.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. And then, I guess-
I'll make a motion, we accept the police chief's salary with that same contract.
To be in line with the contract.
Be in line with it, yes, as an emergency.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Right. Moving right along.
Can we take the next one?
What, the budget?
Yeah.
You ready? Go for it, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to request legislation approving the 2024 budget to- budget to send on to full council for a vote.
I'll second that.
As an emergency, and I would like to thank the auditor for her diligent work in doing that.
Yes.
Just glad it's, glad it's the end of the term.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Transfers.
So now, we're going to do appropriations and transfers. Appropriate, I'll turn that over to...
Okay. So, and for the appropriations, these are all just for salary. They're quite a list here. I do want, for transparency reasons, to say that we are in discussions with the Service Director because under the manpower contract, he may be entitled to a buyout, so that is taken into account here since time is short. That way, we don't have to come back to you guys. So he split four ways, and one of the funds had enough money to cover it, a couple needed a little more money anyway, and we just added that in. That way, if we decide he gets it, if we don't, we don't have to come back and ask, you know, December thirty-first. So I'll go ahead and take a deep breath and read this. Appropriation for personal services salary benefits, et cetera, to end twenty twenty-three, and one oh one program, seven, general government. We are appropriating seven thousand, five hundred to the Service Director Personal Services item lines, three hundred and fifty dollars to civil service personal services, four hundred and twenty-five dollars to civil service clerk personal services, three hundred dollars to court, code enforcement personal services. And the swimming pool fund, I know I'd already asked to appropriate, apparently there was a straggler there, so some more salary came out. One thousand, eight hundred dollars to pool personal services under the swimming pool fund. Two eighty-one, we have to appropriate these lines for Sam. We have received payment in from the two grants that he is paid through along with the general fund, so now I just have to appropriate that. So nine thousand under two eighty-one, twenty twenty-four victims, crime, victims assistance, victims advocate, personal services, and then six thousand dollars into Fund two eighty-two, twenty twenty-four Victims of Crime Act, victims advocate, personal services. And the sewage disposal fund, eight thousand dollars into sewage disposal personal services, and three thousand dollars into sewers and drains personal services. Finally, in the stormwater fund, seven sixty, we are going to appropriate four thousand, five hundred dollars into stormwater utility personal services.
I would like to request emergency legislation for the appropriations presented dated December fifth by the auditor.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I guess we've got that. Oh, and that's not on here, the transfer of funds to the, that's something different then.
Yes, so...
Transfer funds to the Fire Department, okay.
I actually received a call from the auditor, and the way I thought we should do it is not the way we should do it, so if we could pull that, and then I will re-refer it at the next council meeting to do it correctly.
All right.